The garage.
Oh.
And maybe a truck will never run again. Well, that's where you need to do it, fix the car.
Yeah. Put a kill switch in it.
That truck.
But they don't know where it is.
I don't want to. This is the west side. Over here, over here.
Hey. What was that? Oh, yeah. Hey, I'll tell you what, I'm. Every time I go in here and pull up. April twenty-sixth, um. Look what it pulls up, February twenty-second. She fear does the same thing. Maybe I need to. I'm just using my phone as a hotspot, maybe you can have the problem.
That was here, so we can go ahead soon as, in one more minute, we'll just go ahead so we can get down and go home.
Yeah.
Trying to make young men's here right still, so.
You would, yeah, it's true.
Uh, so, yeah, I was like, very quick agenda.
Read this whole thing, this is gonna be done as well. I turned them up. Yeah, that's.
What are they doing tonight?
Oh. They're supposed to be, the priests are supposed to be writing this spiritual thought.
I'm glad you keep thinking.
They're all supposed to write a spiritual thought, so when they're asked to give a spiritual thought.
Oh.
They can pull it out of the volume, so it's.
Okay, okay, well, that's a good idea, as long as you're feeding them, that'll be okay. Well, we're ready to go.
Oh, do we, right?
My phone pulls up the right.
Are you ready to, um, Mike? Guess that's on, huh, it's supposed to be on green. We'd like to welcome you to our planning commission meeting this evening. This is planning commission meeting for April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two. This meeting is being recorded. And we're gonna go ahead this evening and have our opening prayer by Commissioner Marchbanks and a pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Callis.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before thee the beginning of this city meeting. We give thee thanks for all of our many blessings. We thank thee for this great country that we live in and for all the blessings that we enjoy, for those that, uh, serve this country in the military, and we pray that thou bless and watch over them. At this time, we pray that we will be, um, about the city's business and that we will, uh, carry out, carry out our responsibilities to our fullest abilities, and we say these things humbly in Jesus' name, amen.
Will the audience please rise and repeat with me the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We will begin our meeting this evening with an audible roll call of the commissioners. Sharon Call here, Mike Marchbanks.
Here.
Jared Showers.
Here.
Rob Callis.
Here.
Stephen Johnson.
Here.
And Scott Thompson is excused, and Renee Tribe will be joining us in a little bit. Okay, and item number two on our agenda, this is a time for, um, us to approve the minutes from April twelfth, twenty-twenty-two, and commissioners have had a chance to review the minutes. And any changes or corrections? The only one that I had that I felt like you might wanna look at, Kathy, is on, under, um, the public hearing on five. Just, uh, on line twenty-eight, it says Commissioner Thompson called and moved to open the public hearing. I. I just thought you might wanna take that call.
What column number was that, Sharon, and what page, on page three?
Well, it's, um, yes, and it's under the public hearing.
I got that, thank you very much.
Yeah, if it was just a little misspelling or some, I wouldn't worry about it, but that probably needs to be changed.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay.
It was me that, that made a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, on that one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
He may have seconded it or something like that, I think.
Did you hear that, Kathy? Rob said on that, he said he, on that, he moved to open the public hearing, and then we've got Commissioner Tribe seconded it.
Was that on line thirty-four?
No, this on, on line twenty-eight. Right under the public hearing.
Oh, okay, that wasn't me.
It was, okay, so that's correct then, okay, okay, never mind.
Was, was it Commissioner Thompson?
Yeah.
Yes, uh-huh. So we're okay, did you see other places that needed to be corrected? Yeah, on thirty-four, it has you.
Right.
Okay, I, I didn't see anything else, did anyone else have corrections?
I didn't.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Okay, a mot, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous. Item number three, this is a time for public comment. This would be for any items that are not already on the agenda for this evening. Your folk, you folks are just here for other items? Okay, 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 that's great. Okay. Item number four. This is, oh, let me get to the right place here, just a minute. Item number four is a minor subdivision for Linden Nursery, plat B, and plat amendment for Gilman Farms, plat B. And our applicant is Jeff Sallard, and you're welcome to come up if you'd like to. And our presenting staff is Mary Barnes.
All right, thank you. So this item is actually three land use applications rolled into one. Um, we have the minor subdivision of the Linden Nursery plat B, plat amendment of Linden Nursery plat A, and the plat amendment of Gilman Farms plat A. For these three applications, you guys, um, planning commission is the land use authority. Um, and as you can probably recall, the planning commission recommended the approval of Tilia Court plat A to the city council on October twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one. The city council approved this major subdivision on November twenty, sorry, November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. However, the commission, this is an updated plat from since October, by the way. Anyways, the commission added a condition of approval to their recommendation, um, to include this triangular piece in the development. So that's this piece I'm hovering over right now, it's above dash strip border. So, um, and additionally, the Linden Nursery owners and Tilia Court developers, they have adjusted the lot lines within Linden Nursery plat A, which I'll show you right here. They have adjusted the lot lines within Linden Nursery plat A, um, with deeds and without a plat amendment, um, with deeds and without a plat amendment. So that will be. That will be amending the deeds, as you can see, all the different property lines. It is for these two reasons, the condition of approval and the, and the deeds that we, that this land use, these land use applications are before you tonight. So I will first talk about Linden Nursery plat B, and then I'll get into the Gilman Farms plat amendment. So, I already showed you this, but here's the previous, Linden Nursery plat A was recorded in nineteen ninety-seven. And the plat amendment and minor subdivision that you're approving today, they are all, they are both combined onto this plat. It will effectively amend the existing lot lines, which you saw in the aerial, and it will create a three-lot subdivision for the area. Lots two and three will have a primarily commercial use with the bulk bins and the barn on lot two, and then the nursery, um, and other assorted uses on lot three. And then lot four will be, um, the multi-family residential Tilia Court project that was approved last year, fifty-eight townhomes. In regards to subdivision itself, all three lots meet lot requirements of the zone. However, as you saw in your staff report, the utility easements on lot three and lot four are not currently identified. Therefore, they have been added as a condition of approval. After this plat is recorded with the utility easements and the lot lines are cleaned up, the applicant, Jeff, he will be able to record the major subdivision plat, so that hasn't happened yet, we've been waiting to clean up before that could happen. So Borland and Townhomes LLC, who owns this back parcel, and then the Platts, who own these other two parcels, they are the, they're the owners of the property, and they are in agreement with this plat amendment and minor subdivision.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Does the Tilia Court subdivision care of the utilities, or do we need to amend this one with the utilities?
That's something that we probably need to ask the engineers. I, uh, yeah, maybe Trent.
Cause I think it's on that plat, but if you need it on this plat, uh, again, maybe that's a staff issue condition.
If that.
We'll just make sure they, they both coordinate.
Right, okay.
Either way, I don't think lot three is shown on the Tilia Court plat, and the utility easements have to be, like, that dash line has to be put around. Anyways.
Do we need to do anything as far as conditions or anything on that?
It's already included in the condition.
Yeah, we, we put it in there already.
Okay, I, I didn't look for.
Yeah, no worries.
And if we need to amend that condition, as Mary goes through, to add any language we can.
Okay.
But before I move on to the Gilman Farms plat, are there any questions you have about this Linden Nursery plat amendment and subdivision?
I think it's like you said, it's just cleaning up the lot lines.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Um, so it can be recorded. And, and we.
Lot four includes the roads that will be dedicated to the city.
Right.
That's why it looks weird.
Like it's part of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess I'm confused from the note on the plat that says Linden Nursery parcel will be consolidated into Gilman Farms plat.
That's the next item.
Right, but what remnant are we talking about?
Oh, are you talking about this note?
That went behind the homes.
Yeah, let, let me.
Is what the plat's called.
Let me go over that right now. So here's that original Linden Nursery plat A showed earlier, as you see, there's this, it's called a drainage ditch, and I don't know if it was used as like an old farm lane. Basically, that is, that is zoned as residential also. It's hard to use, cause it's so long and skinny. And a PRD overlay is only allowed in, in a commercial zone. So applicant Jeff was able to deed that over to Farnsworth Farms LLC.
Actually, the Platts did that.
The Platts did that, sorry.
Without me, in exchange for some concrete work that Denny did with the improvements they're putting on their commercial stuff.
Okay.
But we're cleaning it up for them as we do this.
Okay.
Mike, you can probably confirm that, but Phil said it was an old farm lane.
Yeah.
Previously, and then also acted as a ditch or something.
And, and it did get deeded over by Platts before, I think, Jeff got involved.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
All right. Well, so. Let's see, what else needs to be said? So, um, what you're approving today, so this is the new plat, Gilman Farms plat B, Gilman Farm plat B. Um, what you'll be approving today is the elimination of that plot line. What, what you can see there, that line, that's not an actual line, that's the, that's a public utility easement that's there because of the drainage ditch. But it's removing the, the concrete lot line from that area, and then also adding, I mean, in this previous one, it's, it's been changed since.
So it's amending the Gilman Farms plat, correct?
Yeah, it's just amending and making, bringing it up to what it is currently, if that makes sense. So, yeah, it's just consolidating changes, and sure, it's up to date, and Farnsworth Farms LLC, Denny Farnsworth, he owns both of these properties, so he is in agreement with this plat amendment. Therefore, with the approval of these applications, um, the condition of approval will be met, Tilia Court will be able to move forward, and the properties will be in further compliance, and do you have any other questions?
We just need the two separate motions, though, don't we? As you've got on.
Two sep, yes.
It's two plats, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So nothing's being proposed for Denny's parcel at this time.
Just cleaning up the lot lines.
Right.
Yeah, like you can see in this.
Platts deeded it, but it, but it needed to be done as a subdivision.
Yeah.
And then, yeah.
Yes, see, there's no longer this, like, lot two, or whatever, and this, this line jogs out now around some type of gar, garage, and then there's this yellow line there that will disappear with this plat amendment.
Any questions for Mary or Jeff?
So, just to clarify, Gilman Farms plat A was with the strip. Plat B is incorporating the strip.
Gilman Farms plat A was not with the strip.
It never included the strip.
The strip was with Linden Nursery.
That's what I mean, it didn't include the strip.
Yeah, it didn't.
But B does.
Yes.
Correct.
It was owned by the Platts, that strip.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
In effect, Denny bought it from them in exchange for, uh, more in some
Right.
concrete form.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Rob, do you have anything else?
Hmm, no.
I guess only a comment that, I'm happy to see that it's a public road going out there on the south side, and I'm not sure how you resolved Dashrip's concern about that, but.
But we did.
But you did.
There was some give and take on both sides, and.
And, and that's, we're happy with that.
We are too, I mean, that was what we would have liked from the beginning, so it worked out.
Okay. We need two separate motions, so do I have someone willing to make the first motion? This would be for the Linden Nursery plat amendment, minor subdivision approval. Are, do you have questions or anything you would like to ask?
We were addressed by this gentleman over there when we came to the door, so that helped clarify. I told him, so we came just to make sure we understood what was going on.
And, and are you okay with that?
No, we live on Gilman Lane.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
But we're familiar with that property that used to be.
Sure.
My dad's before Platts bought it, you know, just, just checking on it.
Yeah, sure, well, we're glad you came, and, and made sure you understood things, and, and are you okay on things now, or any other questions?
I think it's great.
Okay, okay. Let's go ahead with the first motion, do I have someone willing to make that motion?
I can do it.
Okay.
I move to approve the applicant's request for plat amendment and minor subdivision approval for Linden Nursery plat B with the following conditions. One, the applicant will continue to work with the city engineer to make all final corrections to the plat. Two, complete or post an adequate improvement completion assurance warrant, and post required assurance for all required public infrastructure improvements. Three, prior to plat recording, the applicant will update the final plat Mylar to include all public utility easements and notarize signatures of owners' consent to dedication, and obtain the signatures of all entities indicated on the subdivision plant attached here too. And number four, all items of the staff report.
I think, okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous. Okay, and now we have another motion, this was, is the one for the, uh, Gilman Mar, Gilman Farms plat B. Do I have someone willing to make that motion?
I just, a thing that confused me about this is I didn't know why Jeff was the applicant for this.
Be, because I'm helping the Platts.
The applicant for this?
It should have been, well.
So, we, we had Denny sign a, um, owner's consent form, uh, because Jeff was already working on these Platts. The Platt family had already did, they deeded that to Denny, and so, um, we, Denny was okay with that owner's consent with Jeff moving forward.
Neither of them wanted to really, and they don't do this, so they were like, will you please do it? And I said, sure.
Well, that was just a little confusing to me, that's why I asked for the explanation earlier. But I, I can make this motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the applicant's request for plat amendment approval for Gilman Farms plat B with the following conditions. The applicant will work to work, will continue to work with the city staff to make all technical corrections as necessary to the plat prior to recording. The applicant will obtain all necessary utility notifications prior to final plat approval. Prior to plat recording, the applicant will update the final plat Mylar to include notarized signatures of owners' consent to dedication, and obtain signatures of all entities indicated on the subdivision plat attached here too, and all other items of the staff report.
Okay, I have a motion, um, do I have a second?
Second that motion.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous, and thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Mike, could you second that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is an ordinance amendment, so we do need to open a public hearing. To have a motion to open, oh, thank you for being here with us. To have a motion to open, open the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous. And this is, uh, item number five, an ordinance amendment, seventeen point seven six, planned residential development overlay. And the applicant is London City, and our presenting staff is Mike Florence.
Okay, thanks commissioners. If you remember, we went through this ordinance last, uh, planning commission meeting, and, um, you know, this kind of all originated because the council held a discussion item in this, I think in February, and requested that the planning commission and staff look at density, uh, transition, looking at, uh, putting the, the maps in of the three locations where these planned residential development overlay zones are, are located. Look at parking, um, and, um, those were the main topics. So, and then last meeting, the, the commission, um, asked staff to go back and look at that section on the two-hundred-foot buffer when you're connecting with a street to an existing neighborhood. You requested that, that be, uh, rewritten so that it's single-family homes only, detached single-family homes or lots, um, when they're connecting to an existing street. So, uh, the language staff came up with was, uh, this one here, it says, um, let me see where to start. Says the development shall be required to transition the density from ten units, uh, per gross acre to six units per gross acre, and the density transition shall be developed with only detached single-family lots that meet the lot size requirements of seventeen seventy-six thirty. And so, that, those minimum lot sizes are five thousand square feet, um, that's called out in that seventeen dot seventy-six, uh, which would be about, uh, the six, around the six units to the acre, uh, that, that, um, would be approved for this. The other section we talked about last meeting, it says, where a development will connect to an existing, so we talked about traffic calming. Uh, so this is the language we came up with. Where a development will connect to an existing and abutting single-family neighborhood, or a residential R-one-twenty zone through street connections, the city engineer shall evaluate traffic calming measures in order to minimize traffic, uh, impacts. And then the last one we changed, we didn't talk about this one, but as I went through the code, um, it's easier if I go to the red line section in the code, in the ordinance. So, if you remember, we changed everything to pu, requiring it to be public streets. And so, this section that I struck out here had to deal with accessing parking stalls from a private driveway. Um, and so, since we're not doing private driveways or streets anymore, um, I just took that out, and then added the following, all off-street parking spaces shall be approved by the planning commission, which shall review traffic volumes and visibility on the public roadway to ensure it, parking is not locate, parking. It is, yep, so that parking is located in a safe manner, I'll have to get rid of that knot right there. And then the last one, frontage on corner lots shall meet, uh, this is our parking code seventeen dot eighteen, to ensure that driveways are not within forty feet of an intersection of a public street. So it's just making reference back to that.
Mike, can you go back to the first one?
Mm-hmm.
And just, I, I don't think it's a change, but I just wanna verify also that, did we keep in there if it was next to residential? That it was then eight?
Yeah, we did.
The density of eight?
Yeah, I just didn't include that whole paragraph, um, but yeah, that last sentence.
I thought it was in the, the paragraph above, you just didn't, it wasn't changed.
Oh.
But.
Yeah, this.
But it's right there in the bottom there, too.
Yeah, so, where a PRD development abuts an existing single-family neighborhood or residential R-one-twenty zone, and there's not a street connection, the density shall be reduced to eight units per acre.
Next to the single-family residential.
Next to the single-family, anywhere else it can be tan, and it's, this is promoting it, trying to be closer to the, the commercial area, the commercial uses.
So just thinking through that, if, I mean, on the single-family, we have a buffer of two-hundred feet?
Mm-hmm.
Is it just, how do we define that eight per acre, I, I, I'm just trying to think, how do they draw those lines, you know, is there, just whatever lots there are?
Linden Nursery, Karen.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, how are those? You just take all the lots that abut it, and those have to be, is, is that, I mean, it doesn't matter how wide they are or whatever. It, it just has to be eight per acre at that point.
So, for example, on this plat here, what I would have done is taken the required access lane, um, that, you know, let's say this only had homes on one side. So you, I'd take where the setback is measured from, so if it's, has to have a ten-foot setback on the side of the home, so I'd go ten feet on the side, come out to what I need for the, uh, full access width for the two lanes of travel, come down and do the six-foot side yard setback on the other side, cause they have to have sixteen-foot combined side yards.
And that's the area you would take to calculate the, the density?
Yeah. Whatever is needed to, to fulfill the requirements for access and setbacks to that development.
So that would be my only question, is there need to be something in the ordinance that helps define that? May, maybe construction understands it all the way, but, but I, 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 I wouldn't know how to calculate that density, and so could there be future arguments about, well, we, we calculated it this way, and we're calculating this park into it because it's over here, or?
Yeah.
I, I, I just don't know if that needs to be.
There probably could be, um, and I thought about that, and I was trying to figure out what's the best way to, to define that, um. And, yeah, I mean, you could even say, you know, because they're required to have the twenty percent open space, uh, how's that calculated? I don't know, that makes it hard, I, I really, I struggled with that, trying to transition to that eight units.
Right, and so that was my only question, is how does that get calculated right? Cause I can see them putting them the open space next to there, and maybe that's great for the residents, and they should count it. I, I, but somehow that should probably be defined in the ordinance, so that, one, we're not making that decision as a planning commission city council, right, that's arbitrary.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought about that as well, and it, it was, it's a little hard to define if we try to, try to transition like that, um.
Is it a public hearing that can ask a question?
It is a public hearing.
Well, why don't you come up?
Yeah, sorry. So the, this is an example, right, where it's not a through street, so where it would apply. So would it apply to the, to the home? So would it apply to the, to the home, to the road four ninety north?
Yeah, would've applied.
Because those backed up to residential.
Yeah, those would've had to been.
And then, and then where you were describing earlier. But then on the north end where it backs up to commercial, would it apply to that end unit? Where it's the side yard or only to the backyards? Do you see what I'm saying?
So it would apply to one oh seven through one eighteen.
Okay.
And then it would apply to one forty-one through one fifty-eight.
Okay, but not one oh six?
No.
Where the side yard go, okay.
No, because you got twenty-seven feet right there.
Okay, and it's only one row, I guess, of housing?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so I was trying to, how do we even define one row, right, or how deep that is? Because the other way, we said we need two hundred feet of single-family homes, which I think is easier to define, right? If there's a road connect, you need two hundred, uh, just, you know, do they turn the, do they turn the homes another way to make them skinny along there, or, you know?
Yeah.
Is it defined as one row? Did it say that, or just?
No, it just says, um.
Because that would kind of make sense to me, you know what I mean?
But again, how do you measure, where, where do you measure that?
Well, if you, if it's eight to the unit, then it's however deep those are for the street in front of them.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
So it says, where planned residential development abuts an existing, single-family neighborhood or R one twenty zone, and there's not street, not a street connection, the density shall be reduced to eight units per acre.
For that first row, or for the housing that backs up to the R one twenty?
Uh-huh.
Or something like that you could add, I think that would kind of clarify.
Yeah.
Because across the street, you could still do the townhomes for ten, but you'd have to, so it's either one row or the, or the units that back up to the R one twenty, I think that kind of makes sense.
Right, that touch the R one twenty or adjacent to, or?
Well, it's back up to because side yard if you need, but, yeah.
Yeah, you could say something, uh, at the beginning of the sentence, um. Townhomes, you know, or, or, you know, residential buildings in the planned residential development zone that have, but, I, I don't know, we, we could come up with something with that.
Just, just the wording there, I think, to make it clear, because I, I just worry that.
But it does go back to your point, how do we ma- like, how does someone know where to measure that? And I, I could work on that to say, here's what's included, you know, how, how you measure that.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah, it sure does help if it's really clear so that, you know, it's not arbitrary for Planning Commissioner, City Council to apply.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the hope is what the developer would be able to show, calculate, this is how I'm getting my eight units to the acre. That's what I had in my mind, but you'd be, also be, have to be able to call that out, so.
Okay.
Again, we are, we are in no hurry to pass this, and so if, if that's something.
I mean, since I've been through this, is it helpful if I bring up other?
That's okay, sure.
Question, so one of the other requirements in the zone is you have to have different building types?
Right.
So does the eight to the acre count as a different building type versus the ten to the acre? Or do you have to have different building types within the eight to the acre? Because if you've only got one small row, I don't know that you could get different building types.
Yeah, it just, it just calls out, um, your building types as, single-family, multifamily, si- um, townhomes. And so, it, it doesn't call it out as a, as a row or?
So meaning it would, like, if I had, single-family, uh, backing up to it and then townhomes across the street, those are different building types?
Those are different building types, or if you, like in your case, you did a fourplex and all sixplexes.
Right.
That, that worked as a building type to have a fourplex instead of a sixplex.
Okay.
So, like, let's say someone.
But I think one of the questions that, in my mind, is the multifamily, are we still going to require two different types of, you know, building types in addition to the single-family? Or does a single-family count?
Single-family counts.
Okay.
So like on the Norton property, they have the townhomes and the, single-family, that counts as their two types.
Okay.
But the townhomes then could be all the same building and the single fam- okay, so that, I think that's what I was trying to understand too.
Yeah. So let's say someone was just doing units, one oh seven through, or one oh seven through one eighteen, and they would have to do a fourplex on one and a sixplex on the other to meet their two different building type requirements.
Right. Okay. But on the Norton property, I mean, the building types are, are alike on the townhomes, but he does have that varied greatly with colors and, and it seems like some different styles.
Yes.
And, and that's what we liked.
Yeah, I think he's got six different styles of
Right.
of townhomes, and some vary in architectural
Right.
facades and, uh, even design some, there's a couple buildings where two of the units are bigger than the other four units.
And that's what we appreciated about that, so, okay.
So Mike, it doesn't matter how deep the property is, right? It's just, whatever a butts or backs up to the R one twenty would have to be eight.
That's correct.
And then whatever's left, given the distance you are required to have from State Street, could be ten. Okay.
Unless there's, it, unless there's a road connecting.
A road that connects, yeah, okay.
Then it's six for those.
Are there other, uh, sections that
One.
need to be corrected or clarified?
To ask about, or I, I've had residents who couldn't be here ask me about and brought up. For instance, on this property, the, the Linden Nursery, had some residents say they were discouraged or would like to see that something, because this is a trade-off, right, between we're giving some residential in the back for something. If it's new, right, they have to build something new residential. On this one, they're like, well, why didn't we, why doesn't the ordinance require then this site plan to come up to code? You know, it would be a chance to say, well, it's a trade-off, bring this up to parking, you know, bring us a site plan that says, here's the parking plan and the parking meets it, here's the landscape plan and it's now up to code, and here's, so, so there's, I guess the same thing, skin in the game on the, on the commercial side, right? There, in this instance, the Platts were able to sell their back property, which they weren't able to before. I don't know what, I've just had residents bring that up, you know, why?
Meaning Linden Nursery should be brought up to code, is that your thing?
Yes, just, just like we're requiring, if it was not built, do we have to build twenty-five percent of the commercial before the residential can go forward?
I don't think we, if we've already approved the previous ordinance and the developments were approved based on that, and now we're revamping the ordinance, I don't think we can go backwards and.
No, I don't want to go backwards, I'm saying as we go forward, that could be a, a, that's something that could be addressed, that if there's an existing commercial development there, to have them, you know, come up to code or, or have a, a site plan that meets our current regulations.
Well, it would have to apply to, I mean, it would have to meet the new ordinance.
The, the commercial, like, I can see where, maybe let's go to an aerial photo here.
As long as it's the same owner, but you couldn't do that to a commercial owner that may, that was a different owner than what was going on in back of it.
Oh, I see.
Should they?
Let's say Platte didn't own it.
Oh, I, I see what you're saying.
But I think, I think the ordinance, it has to be together.
Yep.
Right, in order for it, they, that you can't just develop it without it being attached. I mean, it's, it's a deep lot of commercial.
Yep.
I mean, you could like, like Steve's saying, you know, you could've required landscaping or something along the, along the new public road.
Right, and, and, you know, one, one concern here, and I'm sure the Platts have got to figure it out to keep their business going, but we've got a road, two roads cutting in here, what's our parking going to look like? Is there enough stalls? All those things didn't come through a review, which might be helpful to them or, and, and to us to see what that plan would be. So, that's just a suggestion, you know, do we put something in there that, um, if it's an existing business that they?
To, to the extent feasible.
To, yes, and, and, but, I mean, it would be really sad if through this now they, they wouldn't have enough parking. Yeah, be- because we just approved it and we didn't really look at, oh, well, the number of required spots and.
Yeah, that, that was a concern and Jeff and I did have discussions about that, um, to make sure that the commercials still met drive aisle access requirements, that they still had all their parking that they were, they needed, so we, we did, on, on, you guys didn't see that, but Jeff and I, we did have those discussions, but I think it, it probably would be good for the commission to see, making sure we're.
A new site plan that, that brings it into compliance as much as.
To make sure that it stays in compliance and, um, if, if there's things that could be added to, to improvements.
Right.
I know the staff engineers looked at it as well as we were going through.
Right.
But, but again, I think the Platts now will work on, right, and I do their parking for the Red Barn and for everything.
So that's just, I know a couple residents have mentioned that, that's their concern, wh- whether, you know, there's viable lots for the business and parking and, and I can't answer them yes or no, because I haven't seen anything, right? That nothing was brought to us to say, this is how the parking is going to be, this is.
Yeah.
So I, I, I would like to see something like that if, you know, maybe not super strict, but at least to make sure it meets minimum requirements.
Right.
Well, I guess I assumed that our staff would not make an, turn the Platte Nursery into a non-conforming use and therefore they did, yeah, they can't do that, so, their hands are tied to make sure they're not creating something that doesn't have adequate parking.
But I, I think it, you know, and that.
Doesn't hurt for us to look at it, but.
And that's what we would, that we would report to you, that, hey, this is how they're in compliance.
Right, just, maybe even just so, even, like, this is a public process, right, so that the public that could see that, right, it would be then open to them to see that this is their plan. Then there wouldn't be those questions.
And that's been worked through, yeah.
Okay.
So would you add that to the ordinance then?
Yeah, we could, they could have a general statement about that.
I mean, I, and maybe, because their site plan has obviously changed, right? I mean, from what it was approved, now there's a road in it and different things for their business, so. I don't know if under, under normal law, we'd have to see that site plan to change it anyway, I, maybe that's something I don't understand, whether we would or not, but if we made it part of the process, then that wouldn't be a question.
Well, and like Mike said, this is a work in progress on this, we don't have to be in a hurry to, and, uh, I think the hope is that we won't be approving many more of these types of developments, but I, if someone were to come in and, you know, apply that type of thing, as long as we're working on the ordinance, isn't there some stipulation that?
Yeah, this is a pending ordinance, you've held a public hearing on it, it's, it's a pending ordinance, so someone that wanted to come in would have to, you know, meet these updated standards that we're working on.
That's what I understood too.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine looking at this again, that's no problem.
Okay. Well, unless, um.
Any, any issues other than the, how to measure the density on the current proposal before you? Were you okay with the traffic calming, um, statement?
Yeah, I thought that was good.
Section on the parking, the Planning Commission reviews that, I'll take out the knot on there and make sure my grammar's correct.
So we're going to require two parking stalls per unit?
And, and all two park lodges, right?
And then a half, half unit, half parking stall for guests per unit.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, the only other discussion item that I mentioned at the end of last time is, I believe, and this could be my personal opinion, but if I remember right, that one of the reasons, you know, was this idea of incentivizing commercial development on places that haven't. And want to make sure that, at least in my mind, I'd like to make sure that that's still in there, that there's that, they need to build, there needs to be this viable commercial, that's, I guess a trade, right?
We haven't changed it.
So that hasn't changed now. You know, my opinion is that should be fifty percent, but that's just my opinion, you know, as we're bringing up things, I would like to see that the driver be more of the commercial. I know we're not in an environment where that maybe is even possible, but I know that's, was the whole, at least my understanding when this ordinance was started, was that that was impetus, is this was a, you know, an exchange for some good commercial development, we'll let the residential go in. And, am I wrong in, in thinking that, that's?
No, I think that was the intent.
Well, it started with existing commercial, with the Platts.
Right.
And then I think as Norton came along, obviously that trade-off made sense and was implemented, but.
Well, I think we even looked at it before the, these two even came up and said, hey, that five hundred foot commercial
Is probably too deep.
line is too deep.
Yeah, we, and we talked about that, but, you know, I think it's important to get, I guess, I guess I'm worried the twenty-five percent, that we could get a building that's just built just to get the residential, just sits vacant, or just to get that going where I would hope, you know.
I think that's kind of Amy's intention right now.
And I'm struggling a little bit even the opposite of that, though. She, it's almost like, are we forcing a commercial use that we really don't want? Just so they can get the commer- the residential going?
I have a concern about that. I'm not as concerned about it going before the residential.
And I'm not, because it's already zoned commercial, you, you can't change that.
I mean, if it's zoned commercial and you can't change it, it will develop into commercial eventually. And if it's not before the residential, yeah, so what?
I think we were just hoping to.
Get what you want on the commercial side.
I think we were just hoping to get to attract some good commercial.
Yeah, we are all hoping that we get it done, get some tax revenue flowing, but,
Yeah.
but gosh, it, it's better to have a good development than a bad one.
Right, and I guess, I guess the question is, is there strong enough push on the residential, which it seems like there is, that we could get a bad commercial, um, development? But, it's just, I guess, just the, the Lindenite in me that's been here, it's really hard to put up a lot of, um, I, I know when Mike Van Cherry will correct me, that it's not high-density housing, but in Linden, the definition of high-density housing is more than a half-acre lot, okay?
Everything above the canal is less than that.
Okay, so everything, everything under a third acre lot is high-density in Linden.
Yeah.
Right, and, and for a lot of people, anything.
Could we call it medium?
Medium density?
Because it really isn't high-density.
I know, it's not high-density.
Well, it's kind of your
I guess I just struggle with.
Your middle housing is what it is.
We're hoping to clarify that with our general plan update and talk about that.
But just, to open it up, that, because I can see people rezoning stuff commercial, to get deep commercial lots. I mean, and that's a, under a pretense of doing something else, oh, we're going to have a, a big box go here, oh, it didn't work. I just worry that, I, I don't know whether, but, um, I've seen strange things, you know, not as much here in Linden or in Lan- but people to get what they want, I just worry.
But you have to remember, this is also, someone has to come through for a zone change, they have to come through for an ordinance amendment, I mean,
and.
These, these are going to be big topics. When, when UTA puts BRT on State Street, under state law, you have to come up with a small area plan for higher density. They don't say what that density is, but around every transit station they're going to do for BRT, state law now requires you to come up for a small area plan for every station. And so, you know, that, they're expecting if they're going to put in a billion-dollar bus line, that you're going to put.
You're not going to call third acres high-density.
So that, I mean, that's years down the road still, that's, that's still ten years, but, you know, at some point, you know.
Require two car drop if they want them next to the bus.
Yeah.
Well, that's already happened in Salt Lake, I mean, they're approving projects every day that hardly any parking.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so.
Is there anything else that you would like to have added to?
I, I guess I would, I would.
Or changed?
I would love to make it. Stricter on that, but I concede both points, so that's just my opinion.
Right.
And it's a discussion point for the. For the commission, I, that, that's just, that's just my discussion point, ever, other than that, I think, um. Staff and City Council have done a pretty good job of looking at the, the things that we need to tweak in this, and.
Well, and from what I understand, you're going to reword a few of those other items we brought up tonight?
Units to the acre, how that's measured, and then the, um. So a general statement about bringing the commercial up to. Current standards as, as much as feasible.
Or, and maybe have them just present the site plan as part of the presentation of the new, of what the.
So as far as that goes, we, and, and especially where we're not in any. Hurry to get it approved, we would want to continue that again tonight.
Yes, please.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Sure.
When it, when it talks about existing commercial up to current standards. It seems like the one you would have the most. Ability to look at would be parking. I don't know that. The Platts probably couldn't rebuild the nursery. With the look that it has, but I don't think it would be right to say, you have to redo the entire exterior of the nursery building.
No, I don't think.
It seems like parking is the one that would be the most concerning.
Park, parking landscaping.
And you got new roads coming in and things like that.
Yeah, so, so, for instance, if it was on a place that didn't have sidewalk, well, let's get the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Those, those types of things, those are the things I'm saying, let's bring it up. You know, require the improvements, but some landscape, no, no, nothing on the architectural designs.
Or what, you know, that seems like that would be.
No, I don't, that's not the intention.
Okay.
But I would think. Yeah, site plan.
Architectural.
Yeah.
Improvements.
Because the site plan will change with roads.
Right, and so.
Which could affect your parking and sidewalk and pedestrian access, safety.
Safety.
Things like.
Maybe they're taking out some landscaping with the road, let's, let's move it to a place that it needs to be, that type of stuff.
Reasonable.
Um. Let's go ahead and close the public hearing unless you have other comments.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Uh, thanks for being here.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous. Okay, and then we do need to go ahead with a motion?
I'll make that motion. I move to recommend we continue ordinance amendment twenty twenty-two dash five dash zero. As presented with. Uh, the changes and consider the suggestions we've made tonight.
Okay, I have a motion to continue, do I have a second?
Second that motion.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous. Okay, as far as planning commission, things you'd like to bring up? Okay. Um, and I brought you a question earlier today, I didn't notice if you'd responded, but it's okay.
I have had time, so I will.
No, it's okay.
But I have the information now, so I'll, I'll look at it.
Yeah, it's okay.
We talked about co- what requirements for cottage kitchens, or cottage industry as a home occupation, so. So that, the state law allows you to. Make stuff like baked goods out of your home as part of a cottage industry, so.
And, and that was a lot of the question, I had a, a resident that said. I'm gonna make pies out of my home, and if the only people I'm selling those to is just the direct consumer. Rather than. You know, stores or restaurants or anything. Do I need any kind of special licensing or anything? And so that's what he's checking into. And she sent a thing, you probably, I forwarded that to you, saying. You know, the laws change, so I don't have to do that now. And, but she did want me to check on it, that's the reason she.
Okay, selling them to the consumers will actually create more of a problem than selling them wholesale to a vendor. As far as neighborhood traffic and.
I, I don't think, I don't think she'll have that much.
Well, she may not, but others might.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I, he, Mike's checking into that.
I'm guessing there's lots of health department regulations there too, right?
Yeah.
That need to make sure there.
And, and she had, does have a food handler's permit.
Right, but you know.
They usually have to do an inspection still of the home and.
All the stuff that are required.
Well, I don't know if you're required to have all of that.
Yeah, I don't know.
To just, if you're just selling to your neighbors or whatever.
I think.
If you're selling retail, you are.
When, when I was a kid working in the little snows, they, we started to have that in the little snow cone shack.
Did you? Hmm. I don't know, that's what she's trying to find out.
Figure it out.
Could have changed, but I know that was.
And, and she's not really pushing back on it, she's just trying to find out what she needs to have to do.
Yeah, we'll figure that out.
Okay. I, I don't have anything else, do any of you have items you wanna bring up? I, I am curious as far as the house is being demolished, where that's at in process.
I emailed Amy last Thursday, she said they were supposed to be down this week, and. I haven't driven by, so I doubt they're down yet.
They're not, they haven't touched them.
Okay.
They obviously don't have their permit from the state yet.
Yeah, she said they were working on that.
Okay, and then I. Of course, the temple groundbreaking was really interesting, and. And it, I mean, they didn't waste any time, they're tearing it up.
Yeah, they said. When we talked to them a couple months ago, they said the Monday after the groundbreaking will be going full speed.
Yeah, and, and if you drive by there, I don't know. You probably have.
I haven't since.
I have, and gosh, they're tearing out trees and got all kinds of big equipment in there, and.
Yeah, they got twenty-seven months, they said, so.
Twenty-seven, yeah, okay. Yeah, so, uh, I'm going, wow, when they break the ground, they're, they're serious. And I thought it was interesting, I just listened to it online, the City Council's discussion on. Um. Improvements for Center Street.
Yeah, I didn't stay for that, and so.
Well, they, they just basically were talking about, you know, the sidewalks, so sidewalks would be on both sides, and street lighting, whether they'd. Have the new street lighting match the previous street lighting, so it's. You know, it looks alike, and, and trying to decide what kind of, um. And Kathy probably can fill me in on this, what kind of. Um, you know, landscaping type things as far as. If they wanna do hanging baskets on the, on the lamp, you know, streetlights, or if they wanna do planters, or. Um, those types of things along there to beautify that street. So, um, they're, they are really trying to make plans to be able to do that, so.
That's on the council agenda too, the next.
Oh, is it? Yeah, this was a.
Item, so they're probably gonna decide on that, on the.
Oh, good, yeah, this was just a discussion, and, uh. So that is interesting to s- to listen to some of their thoughts on improving that, and making it a really nice street. So. Um, I don't have anything else.
I just have a reminder about our Thursday evening meeting.
It's me and you and who else?
It's the whole planning commission's invited.
That's right, okay.
That's gonna be a live meeting here.
Yes, yeah.
That's the whole planning commission on.
Planning Commission, City Council, and the General Plan Committee.
Okay, okay.
So, we'll have dinner here.
I, I knew there are certain of us are on the General Plan Committee, but that's for everyone.
And then next month, we'll meet as a committee for May.
Okay, okay.
And then.
So two meetings this week.
So, we're doing Pizza Factory Pizza, and so, we'll have that, and.
On Thursday night?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. But, and that's at.
That's at six, yep.
Yeah, an estimated length?
Hopefully, two hours, right around there, about an hour and fifteen minutes on the general plan, and hopefully about forty-five minutes on the commercial design standards.
Okay. You can plan for that, huh? All right, do, I have a motion to adjourn the meeting then.
She'll move.
Motion and a second then.
I'll second that.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.